Okay, good afternoon. Let's get started. Work session, we are starting off with the work session. It's October 23rd, 2024. Time is little past 4:00 p.m. Director Bankus is a little under the weather and she is joining us remotely. Director Jorgensen is out of town and is unable to join us. In attendance are board members, Director Hayfley, Director Carey, Mel Parkham, Art and Nelson. And then Director Bankus is joining us remotely. Also in attendance is Superintendent Gall and several of his team members as well. The first item on the agenda is enrollment update. At the beginning of October was the official count date as recognized by the state. The board is receiving enrollment data following that October count date. State certified count is still a few weeks away. We will hear all the details from Superintendent Gall and his team. This item is just purely informational to the board at this time. So future, no action necessary at this time, but it can involve other decision making down the road. With that, I'll turn it over to Superintendent Gall.
Hello, Board and community. I'm excited to be here. I'm really excited to have the support of our team under our Chief Resource Officer, Dr. Comfort, and with Chris Kilroy and Melissa here as well. Amy, I'm sorry. Thank you. I was staring at you and go, no, you're Amy. Particularly for us to really get to some great insights that we've been able to see. I'm gonna let them drive most of these slides, but the overarching update here is the portfolio for District 11 is growing. We have added several hundred kids to the end state role for our district enrollment, but that portfolio is a dramatic shift of where it has traditionally been. So you'll see that, and what I want folks to remember is this isn't new. This is exactly the strategy that we committed to two years ago for a variety of reasons, of which we are continue to see the long-term benefit of which that's going to pay out. There will be a lot of questions of why are traditional schools still not realizing the idea of keeping families invested, particularly in matriculation points? I'll ask you to pay particular attention to the forecast from the demographer two years ago on what are, what I'll just call birth rate or general city loss would be. We're on par with that and then outpacing what we thought we'd be able to do in recapturing other families. So it is a balance. So the good news is is that your 401K is up and you made more money on gold, but you lost a little money on silver. But overall, the district portfolio is strong and healthy and will continue to be that going forward. Brandon?
Yeah, good evening, Board. Joined by our Director of Choice and Enrollment, Mr. Chris Kilroy. You guys know Chris from his time in District 11 prior, as well as his teammate, Amy Perry. Amy's been in enrollment for a number of years. She's also served for the district for a long time. I just wanna make sure and be specific first about Chris's role. We've had a Director of Enrollment for a really long time. If you remember, that was when Mike had a Freudian slip there and said, Melissa. That was our previous enrollment director. Prior to that, it was Blake Miller. I was gonna say Olson. Blake Miller. But we have made a really significant strategic shift, right? And so part of that change in title about making a choice in enrollment is also about making that office more strategic. That's what brings Mr. Kilroy in. He'll speak to that a lot today. But that office is no longer a data, just a data office. That office is now about leaning into schools and creating lots of strategy. If you go and talk to schools or when you're talking to schools, I would ask you to ask them about Chris. He has spent, he's spending more times in schools than I am. He is significantly investing his time in schools, learning from principals about what they need, and he has some really exciting partnerships to share with you tonight. But just wanted to kind of highlight before we got into the details about kind of the change in strategy and why we went that direction. Okay, tonight we'll talk about strategic investments. We'll look at some data. We'll also talk about kind of where we're headed in terms of future actions. As the superintendent just said, part of our strategic investment is that of a portfolio model. And so we continue on the strategy and direction of expanding our pre-K options. I will bring to you next week in our capacity report, a conversation that cements our strategy of putting a preschool in every single one of our elementary schools. Right now, we still have two that don't have that, so we still have some room to grow there. As Superintendent Gall noted, we continue to invest in charter transfers and expanding the portfolio in that relation. There's some really interesting data on our share of charter portfolio in comparison to surrounding districts that I think will be interesting. We'll share later today. And then also that of our AMP pathways. Those are things that we continue to invest in. As we know, our elementaries are established and rolling, and now we're in that place of matriculating up to middle schools. Obviously, another strategic investment that the board has seen, you've seen some financial investment requests over the past couple of years around marketing. We've done some targeted marketing, some direct support to schools, and I believe a few of you have been able to attend some of our vision and logo and branding work that we've been able to do with about 15 or 16 schools. And then the long-term strategy, that seemed like a long-term strategy when we first started talking about it and is now very quickly approaching us, is that of student-based budgeting. And so that is going to play a really significant role in the future enrollment strategy of the district because it changes the benefit of enrollment to schools. Okay, as Superintendent Gall said, the portfolio is growing, growing while the market demand is shifting. I want to be clear, that market demand shift is not specific to Colorado Springs. That's not a new thing here. It has, has been happening in our surrounding districts, and it's been happening nationally for a long time. And so now we're starting to kind of catch up in terms of that, that demand transitioning between charter options as well as our traditional options. So this is just putting it kind of on a regional basis. If you look at our regional partners that we talk about the most in terms of D-49 and D-20, if you take out the enrollment of TCA and New Summit in District 20, District 11 traditional enrollment is basically on par. And that's because nearly, I don't know if you know this, maybe you do because you saw it in the presentation, but 25% of students in District 20 attend charter schools. I spent 15 years in District 20. I never would have thought that that was true. But that's, that's where we are. If you look at District 49 and if you take out their Goal Academy, which is a huge online school, we actually have a larger traditional enrollment. So it's just kind of, to put us in a larger scope, the districts surrounding us are also looking at a portfolio approach, which is not just about traditional schools, it's about other options as well. Okay, Superintendent Gall also alluded to this. This is the enrollment forecast that we received from the demographer a number of years ago. And what you'll see is he was pretty close to right on. It wasn't off. I think when he submitted those numbers a number of years ago, we really wanted that to be really far off. But it is, it is pretty accurate, and we are addressing a number of the strategies that he submitted in his recommendations report that we should address.
Yeah, so just kind of reiterate what Brandon and Mr. Gall were sharing. The addition of the charter schools, I think, has been pretty positive for the district. I think it's pretty standard procedure for districts nationwide right now. And I think when you add a Thomas McLaren and an Orton Academy, I've been to both schools, Orton several times. These are, these are really value-added organizations to the district. They provide a service and they, and they give choices to parents. So I just want to underscore that, that point that you made. The retention strategies, these are the list that in 2023, the demographer came up with some recommendations and gave some numbers that they thought would remain in D-11 if we implemented these strategies here. I kind of want to talk about the second one and then talk about the first one. K-12 matriculation. It's interesting. D-11 is losing kids to 20, 49 and D-2. And the, we're losing students. Their profiles are interesting. We did some deep dives to look at who was moving north and who was moving west, excuse me, east. That would be D-49. And there are very distinct profiles in the students that are leaving. So we did a deep dive into students that were leaving Chappeta, a deep dive into students that were leaving Jenkins, and then subsequently followed with phone calls to these families to talk about how they made their decisions. One of the things that's interesting, we're not losing kids that come to D-11 for just one year. We're losing kids that have been here for five years or eight years. And the, the reason that they're leaving isn't that dramatic. There are some simple, simple things where I spoke with these. So since July, early July, I've been calling families all the way through last week to find out why they made their decision. And one of the things that really kind of stood out was, I'm gonna go down to the first one, or come back to the first one, the pathways. One of the things that was really evident in these families' decision was they could, they were very happy with the school that they were in. So when they attended Chappeta, they were very happy there. When they attended, let's say, Freedom, they were very happy there. But they couldn't then visualize the next step. They couldn't see the trajectory of, you know, secondary for their child. So middle school was an unknown if you were in elementary, high school was an unknown if you were in middle school. And so one of the things that we've been doing, it's kind of on the west side of the city and on the east side of the city, and another strategy in the middle. But what we're doing, so Doherty, I'll just give you a, for example. Jenkins and Doherty are obviously very closely related, but there's an equal number of kids leaving Jenkins Middle School in sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade. When you, when you speak with these families, they, they give you reasons why they're choosing a Liberty or something in D-49. When you really get to the bottom of it, it's that they didn't get a sense that Jenkins was, that Doherty was their logical school of choice. And so what we, where we broke down was building that continuum from sixth grade all the way to their senior year at Doherty. So Doherty right now has, is in the process of doing a pretty significant outreach to the kids that fit the profile of the kids that have left previously. Obviously, it's not the same kid, but similar, high-achieving kids. And so what Doherty is starting to do now is to build that bridge with Jenkins Middle School, starting with eighth grade, moving down to seventh grade. So those kids see Doherty as the logical option for them. And in that process, what they're gonna do is pretty sophisticated. Every family that attends this night, which will be in November, and there'll be several nights, is they can see a schedule produced by Doherty of what their child's four years in high school will look like. And each one is designed, so if you're a math sort of engineering student, you can see what that schedule looks like. If you're a kind of a performing arts student, you can see what that's gonna look like. If you're more of a humanities, you can see what that's gonna look like over four years. And they're gonna connect with the schedule, but more importantly, they're gonna connect with the staff who will be at this meeting and give these families at Jenkins an opportunity to say like, oh, absolutely, it makes 100% sense for me to go from Jenkins to Doherty. It's almost like one continuum. We're doing something similar on the west side. In that particular case, we're including Chappeta, Holmes and Coronado. And they are building their blueprint for what that's gonna look like. One of the things that we've really focused on is when these families come, making sure, because they are very happy in their school that they're in. That isn't the issue. And they will tell you that they're very happy where they are. What they really need to see is it is so logical to go from Chappeta to Holmes to Coronado. I know the staff there. I've been to Open House there. I've had a tour there. My child's met a teacher there. And at Holmes to Coronado, the same thing. So they're building a strand. So when you, when you're a third grader at Chappeta, you're almost looking at one continuous school. Like, of course I'm going to Holmes. Of course I'm gonna go to Coronado. This is gonna be the schools that I attend. We, I think historically, have not been strong in that area, so all of that is getting tightened up. So that's, those are pathways that are above and beyond the actual academic pathways that we offer in the district. When we talk about those pathways, I've just kind of referenced Steel, North and Palmer. Palmer is building a bridge down to North for those families that when they get to eighth grade, so they've been to North, they've been in the GTA, they've been in an IB program, but they have choices at that point. Right in the middle of the city, they can go to Doherty, they can go to District, they can go to Coronado, making sure that those families, when they land at North in sixth grade, that NYPD program to them is one continuous school through Palmer. The good news is that that isn't as heavy of a lift as it is, let's say, on the east side of the city. But what we're doing is we're finding that schools, the families specifically, for the schools have been really invested in this idea because I think they've been struggling with trying to how to make these connections from the elementary to the high school. And so the response from them has been super positive. So like in terms of actionable activity that we're doing, that's what we're focused on now. The charter, the charter expansion, I'm a huge proponent of. Having visited all of them, but specifically spent a lot of time, like I said, at McLaren and at Orton, these are pretty specialized schools with a really good product that families want. And it makes absolute sense to bring them into the fold. It's part of the portfolio that we're, that we're offering. The, the online expansion is, it's, it's kind of twofold. We had Spark, we have Achieve, and we have a blended learning program called Digital, which is just a program, not a school. And I think there's a lot of work being done now to make that more focused and more intentional. So that's sort of like on the front burner, but not operationalized yet. Amy, do you want to just share a little bit about the homeschool augmentation?
So I guess for the homeschool, we have started a homeschool enrichment program up over there at Spark. The kiddos come three days a week-ish, five hours a week for some homeschool enrichment, which a lot of the other districts are doing. Ours is small right now, but we're working to grow it. And we also are partnering with Falcon Arrow Lab to bring in some of their kiddos to do some homeschool enrichment as well.
Yeah, and then as the board knows, when you get down into high-quality renovations, we're gonna talk about Palmer, right? There's been, there's been a conversation of the risk to Palmer's enrollment because of their renovation, which I understand. We have to talk about the opportunity, which is when you have a completely remodeled campus, what, what can that do for your enrollment? As well as those other kind of fast-track facelifts. If the board remembers, a lot of the work that the capital team has been doing over the last 18 months is visible things that families can see, right? In their language, we got out from behind the walls. And now we're doing things that are changing the aesthetic and the vibe of our schools in a really positive way. So we just wanted to kind of share that we didn't come up with these strategies. These were all retention strategies that our demographer came up with. And we have strategic initiatives related to almost all of them in an effort to address that decades decline of traditional enrollment.
I think it is worth noting that according to the state, the last two years, the fastest area of expansion in the state has been in online and homeschool. And so I am proud of the team of thinking about how do we think about our presence in that space as a single school with multiple programs? Because we have not done well in doing this as multiple different schools because they're difficult to sustain when we saw this challenge last year with the decision for Spark High School. We couldn't make the numbers work for it to be a standalone high school, yet we have Digital and Achieve that are thriving. So how do we have an online high school as a version of what happens under a single leader like who's currently leading Digital and Achieve, which is John Bailey? Instead of replicating principles each time over, there's great market, and we talk about it all the time, that when families choose homeschooling, they run out of runway when they get to high school. Because it's very difficult to get your kid access to the scale that you can get in a, in a district-wide system. So whether it's banned basketball or bunsen burners, the relationships that we can make with homeschool networks gets us up to a half of FTE credit when students come and use the brick-and-mortar facility that we can provide there. And I would say that most homeschool families see that as an advantage in the out years. So I'm just trying not to stop my train of thought. Thank you.
Okay, this slide just speaks to the District 11's charter portfolio growth, but more puts it in context of the rest of the region as well as, as the front range. And so you'll see, we have transitioned from 6% of our overall portfolio in charters to 14%. And then on the right there, you can see that in May of 2023, we were, I don't want to say by far, because there's some other schools that are close, but regionally, by far the smallest in terms of our overall composition being, being that of charter schools. Up to what I said earlier, with District 20 being one in every four students and District 49 basically being a one-to-one match right now. Chris?
I wasn't sure if you were done. Yeah, so one of the things that kind of helped clarify, a lot of people have asked questions about, they hear about the certified October count, and then there we have a monthly enrollment report. And so each month, we compare, so in September of this year, we will have a count for the students in District 11, and the same for October, all the way through the academic year. That, that is, those counts are different than the certified counts. So I'm just gonna kind of share a little bit about the certified count. We take, so if you're not familiar with this process, it's intensive. I didn't invent it. I credit obviously Amy with perfecting it. But the process is really looking at every student in the district and looking at a couple of areas that need to be in place for the state to say, yes, the student is in fact in D-11, being educated with a schedule. So what we do is in the certified part of the count is looking at each individual student, whether it's charter or traditional, looking at their schedule, looking at their attendance, and determining, can we move this kid forward for count or can we not? Or is it part-time? Is it part-time online? So there's, there's several silos that kids can fall into. A lot of times, the certified count gets confused with the October enrollment count, which is a standard number that we'll come up with every year, but that is not the certified count. And so, you know, when you look at the difference here, our, we've seen a growth in number of students at District 11. And so people will point out that, that we brought charters into the fold. But bringing charters into the fold, it's not an anomaly. It's not a one-off. This is a pretty standard thing and important thing to do, especially in District 11, because I think for a long time, we had these high-performing charter schools that provided a pretty significant service that were outside the influence, I would say, of D-11. So yes, the count, the overall count of students is up and our traditional is down. But when you look at the, the aggregate, it's very similar to the way other districts are counting their students. It includes charters, and in our case, we would be able to bring some really positive value-added schools into the fold.
So we should have bolded it more, but just to be clear again for everybody, this is not the certified number. So when I bring you a certified number in the mid-year budget, it's not gonna be exactly this. Chris and Amy are still actively fighting for kids right now, trying to, trying to make sure that everybody we have counts and they, they count with validity. And so, but this is where we are, kind of butts in seats. That's the phrase we use when we did that in that October count. Okay?
And that loss is at what percentage? Because we saw the same thing happen the last couple of years is it's, I know when it comes out as hundreds, sometimes it feels so significant, but as a percentage of the total number of kids, it's usually below 1%.
It is usually below 1%. We also see, and I'll bring this to you in capacity report next, or next week as well, a recommendation to move that process a little later in the year, so we're using more accurate information. Because when we start our count process in, in early September to when we're actually certifying count, we do draw down, right? There's, there's kids that just were never in the system. They've transferred, but they're, they're still in the system, but they're not really there. They were there for a day, but we can't really count them. So we see that kind of drawdown, and so this number is very, very close to what we will certify, but it's not exact. But we are having kind of that traditional level of, of drop between windows. Okay, so preliminary numbers. Again, we're up in enrollment overall. McLaren itself brought about 975 students. Orton obviously much smaller, but still bringing students. So that's roughly around 400 students up when we look at October of last year to October of this year. And we are down approximately 600 students in our traditional schools.
And last year, we were down about 250.
Last year, we were down about 250. And so that, I will be transparent, we're still uncertain as to why the change. We, over the previous two years, we had been flattening the line, right? We were supposed to lose, normal projection, 750, 800 kids. We only lost 450. Then last year, what we're supposed to lose, 600, we only lost 250. So why we've ticked back to close to 600, I'm not certain. When you look at the overall trend, or not the trend, when you look at the data for each school, we have a couple of schools that had some big drops, but largely, we just had a lot of schools that had 15 or 20 kid declines that we're still not certain, and Chris is obviously digging into this and doing a lot of research. We're not certain why, why that happened.
What we are certain about is that as we transition to student-based budgeting, there won't be any room in understanding why that didn't happen. Because right now, on behalf of the budget that the board approves, that the district recommended to the board, the, the school doesn't have as much skin in the game. So the teachers there, and we have said out loud, and we will say again, that we will rectify these dollars in the mid-year budget and keep the mismatch to a manageable space and not cut teachers in buildings. But next year, when you lose two families, for whatever reason you lose two families, the principal is gonna be thinking, I'm losing two tenths of then each teacher or two twenty-fifths of each teacher every time I lose a family. And right now, that isn't clear. And so we delivered a very stern message yesterday to our school leaders that says, this is the last year that the board and/or the senior administration is overextended on the idea of we don't want to cut teachers in classrooms. We do not want to do that. But I now actively have to have a waiting line and a lottery for elementary schools of which I think are worthy of governor distinction. We have several that are accredited with distinction that the DAC will come forward to, yet we just can't seem to get the school to think about itself as its own advertising bullhorn. And I think you all have individual schools that you visited that says, there ought to be people camping out at night, the night before the choice window opens to get here. We believe, and we've said this from when, from when we came forward with the student-based budgeting idea, bringing those budgeted dollars and the authority to use those dollars down to the school leader, and I can ask both Mr. Kilroy and Dr. Comfort to opine as previous school leaders, that that gets a little more skin in the game. Because it's the 15 and 20 that's a death by a thousand cuts. The 100 kid loss in a school that's on the state turnaround list, that's not a surprise. People vote with where they see excellence and quality. And when you're on a watch list, parents are saying, I think that there are other offerings. Remember, choice is both a gift and a curse. It just depends upon whether or not you're chosen or chosen away from.
To, and to just extend on Superintendent Gall, yes, it will bring accountability to, to schools. It also will bring incentive, right? Right now, if you add kids to, you add 10 kids, you're Halbert Elementary and you're up 10 kids, you get $120 a kid, right? More in your budget. You get $1,000. What are you gonna do with that, right? When we say, hey, instead of $100, you're actually getting the lion's share of our entire per pupil. You're getting $7,000 a kid, then all of a sudden, 10 kids is an entire another teacher, right? So they're gonna be more in control, not only of the accountability, but of, of the incentive of like, I can really use this program. Great, go get 10 kids and you can make that happen. So I think we're, well, there's gonna be lots of questions about student-based budgeting. The core point of it is that, right? Which is again, get the resource closer to the decision-making where it belongs. And then make sure, yes, there's accountability and there's something that really incentivizes schools and principals to want to increase their enrollment. As an elementary principal, I can tell you, my teachers loved me when I kept their class size at 22 kids. And when it had to creep up to 26 or 27, I got a whole different message. But if I was able to say, hey, with those four kids, that's an aid. I can bring in a teacher's aid for you, right? That's a whole different conversation than just do it for the good of the organization. Okay, more preliminary numbers. So big gains at North and Holmes. Obviously, we added the GMP at North, or I'm sorry, at Holmes. But also on top of that, they saw really significant gains. Buena Vista Freedom, Halbert, Queen Palmer and Rudy, all showing strong enrollment gains. And so no surprise there. What you see at those schools, you see pathways and you see performance, right? And so families are choosing them. Well, and then you see the pathway bullet below. We're staying strong with our, with our enrollment in pathways.
And you'll see the same piece here that, well, you can go to the next one because for our performance-rated schools, generally speaking, that portfolio continues to increase. And in the schools where we saw no loss or a small loss, it was very clear that that was a school that we made a senior leadership change because sometimes the principal is the identity of the school. And so that again is one of the challenges in the system, is whether you're promoting up or somebody's moving on, or we're making a difficult decision. The change in the face of a school, regardless of the change of the performance of the school, is a message that we have to manage better. Because you can see that Chappeta, whose SPF still continues to lead the pack, no longer has its esteemed leader Sarah Scott in front of it, has a very strong new leader in there. But you can see the Chappeta number, I think, shows that it's flat or down slightly.
It's down.
It's down slightly. And nothing about your Chappeta experience is down. But when you have a principal that's been there for But when you have a principal that's been there for eight years and they move on, people then go like, well, I'm not so sure that's where I want to go. And so again, that's that double edged side of choice. But clearly that when we ran the numbers, performance rated schools do not have an enrollment problem. Our largest enrollment problem is both at the matriculation points from any elementary to middle and middle of the high school and in areas where we don't achieve performance. Because families are exercising the very choice that the state asks them to exercise, which is can you find a better option for your family?
Tying back again to a previous strategy, preschool enrollment, that's that's something we continue to expand, both in enrollment as well as seats or availability. So again, we will, we will look to finally rectify any remaining schools that don't have preschool in the in the next year and make sure that that is a universal opportunity in our district. That regardless of where you go or where you live, you have the opportunity to go to preschool and then that is a natural feeder to that elementary school.
You back to the preschool slide, I'm sorry. Preschool continues to be a big opportunity for the district. You can see that the total seats exceeds the projected enrollment. We're working with the state, we're required by for every 16 seats that we offer to hold six back for future special educate, special educa- education identification for kids to get those seats. The other, and so we're not against that, but we have enough data now that we think we can recommend to the state that we dump that down to five or four. Because right now we're leaving open seats of which sometimes never get filled because that special education student never comes into the system. So one, we're going to get closer with the state on this, this is really only the second year of universal pre-K and then secondly, the entirety of that application system and permit system is still too far from the local school itself. We happen to be the ones that have the strongest relationship with our portal partner at Join Initiatives, but it still lags too much. Families are having weeks in between where you get instantaneous feedback when you go see Chris or Amy or anybody across the street in the enrollment office. We're we're a yes and we find you the seat and that portal is still a little opaque. That families put in their top three, it churns around for a while and then you're communicated where your placement's been. And at some time, families then make decisions counter to waiting for that placement. Nobody wants to wait for choice, I think people want choice to be more active. So that's why you'll see that where our projections is that the total seats and the enrollment number will actually be tighter and start to exceed one over the other. The other piece is that we, when we started pre-K, we said little toilets, little seats, little sinks, should have little kids. We did that, that was the first place. We have a couple of buildings that are structurally not in a space where they already have that convenience of we just have to kind of put new furniture in there. And the two of them are Steel and Bristol, which again are ironic to me that those are both high demand pathway elementary schools that I know that as soon as we say, we're opening a 30 seat, two 16 seat pre-Ks, which would be 32 seats, because there's an AM and a PM, they'll fill up as soon as we make the announcement. So we have to get over what is the structural restriction? Do we have to do something inside the building? Do we have to repurpose a mobile unit that we have that's no longer being used at an underutilized school? We can't continue to take the two high demand elementary schools and not have them have a pre-K.
So future actions, obviously we're focusing on that commitment to access to high quality instruction and delivering on those areas of of demand. What you're also hearing a lot about is increasing student experience. And so highlighting those opportunities, understanding the enrollment team, getting a better understanding of what's actually happening in schools. Like I said, that's a strength of Chris, he's going, he's had, he just had his fourth meeting with Digital and Achieve to say, I need to know exactly, exactly what this is so that my office can effectively communicate with families. Beyond just, we have a flyer, it says this, but let me tell you about the unique experience. So getting really attuned to that experience. Continuity and area networks, you saw that our demographer a couple of years ago talked about that K 12 matriculation. We have organized the district in that way and there's benefit in that. And we still have a long way to go in terms of that school to school transition of of student. And then you also heard from Chris about those targeted outreaches that he's doing, he has a number of or a number of schools that he's already created strategies with. You can absolutely ask him, he can speak more to that. Expanding pre-K and then something new that we're going to bring in this spring is a spring intent process. Every single family in the district will fill out, here's my intent for next school year. So that we're doing less guessing and we're actually hearing from specific families what their intent was within a few opportunities for feedback and I'll let Chris expand.
Yeah. So one of the things that's interesting, kind of back to the first one under, is that so I I can't count the number of families I've had conversations with since July to actually probably yesterday, right? It was my last one. What's really interesting is not only are the families long term D 11 families, none of them are unhappy. They're not saying, I am leaving for D 20 because I have my experience at Jenkins or Freedom or Chupita or Holmes was bad. So that's another really interesting caveat and piece of information to work with. These families aren't unhappy with D 11, that's not what I'm hearing in these phone conversations. But what's really going to be important is when we get the spring intent information from the schools and we can see that that a particular family is looking to leave the district to go and have their kid educated, whether it's man or two or 12 or 20, doesn't matter. We're going to have a lot of energy put into following up with those families. Because I don't, I I do think at that point, they are still accessible to us. And I think the departure, if they can learn about what their child's experience is going to be like in that middle school or in that high school with with significant detail, not just like, you're going to love Doherty's, it's great, the kids are great, the staff's great. But really understanding what that kid's experience is going to be like there or at Palmer, Eric Coronado. I think that when they get that really personalized attention with very specific information about what that that kid's experience is going to be, I think that's the point where you can stop them from leaving and then reengage in D 11. They're not leaving because they're unhappy. That is, I I don't even think I've talked to a single family that said, I talked to one and that person is now being homeschooled and the mom said, look, if it's not D 11, he would have been unhappy in 2049, so I I I had that one caveat, there was a family. But it had nothing to do with D 11, so I really think there's an opportunity with that intent process to really systematically go through these families, reach out to them, talk to them and then share what that experience is going to be in detail, not the broad strokes, to really see if we can retain them.
And I think that's all we have. Oh, we have the closing statement.
Yeah. Do you have any closing thoughts on this?
No, I just, I I want to reiterate the idea of of having a bias towards action and that's still working its way through even internal to the system on relationships between principals. I think if somebody were to ask me, what was the biggest move that you made as a superintendent? I would say going from executive directors of school leadership that were functionally aligned, elementary, middle and secondary into a K 12 vertical continuum. We're starting, we certainly see those benefits in our learnings within the schools. And now we're just getting to the place where we're actively saying to parents, it's supposed to be Scott, Jenkins and Doherty. You can choose otherwise, but actually three quarters of our families go to their boundary school. That's that's a really high percentage. I ran it the first year that I was here, that it was 24% of elementary kids choice out, 25 of middle and 26 of high school. I thought the number at high school was going to be a lot higher. Most people follow the sidewalk. We have to be better at talking about the sidewalk so we don't lose those people. The thing that Chris didn't say was it's not just that we lose half of 5th grade at Chupita. For two years in a row, we lost the top half of the C Mass performance kids in 5th grade from Chupita. Which means that when we went through our own internal conversation about moving Gifted Magnet program from West Middle School to Holmes, what we didn't do was tell our Chupita families that before the choice window opened and are we actively telling this year's 5th grade family and showcasing them and giving them a Gifted Magnet night over at Holmes? Because it's not just a random 50% of the kids that are leaving. There is still a perception that you get a better education when you change your logo at the secondary level. And we know that it's not true and now we have the data points to be able to prove it and we have a very activated team to go do that. And so we're excited for that future, but I think this idea of asking families to make a commitment. When I was in DC, the entire system was lotteryed. Now that if you lived across the street from your elementary school, it was built into the lottery, you went to your elementary school. But every family had to make an active choice on where they were going. Because when you say, I'm going to dinner here, as compared to somebody just hands you the dinner, once you make that active choice, human nature is as you're more committed to it than us being passive and waiting for people to show up. I also think it would get us a lot tighter on that inherent loss that we have from butts in seats to count. Because we continue to program kids that we think they're in the system and then we prove that they're not. Instead of rolling over on June 1st, this is what people's commitment was. We can't hold them to that, we're not trying to create a legal document. But when a family says, yep, we're going to be a Doherty family next year, then it's easier for us to track it than somebody saying, did Sophia say she's coming back next year? I don't know, I would assume she is because she's been there three years. Well, let's find out, we'll find out. So I think that activation piece will also be critical at the traditional enrollment. And the other really foot stomper is we're only at 14% of our of our families seen in other than traditional settings. CSST will have its doors open in August, which is not a charter school, it's a D 11 innovation school. But we will continue to expand the boundaries of how do we represent what is clearly market demand, not just in El Paso County, but in the state of Colorado. Being at 6% for the last 10 years and wondering why we're decreasing enrollment. And again, I would never have guessed that D 20 has one out of every four kids in a charter school. I knew D 49 was about one for one. But I think we're going to find a balance that right now we're at about 85 15. I think 10 years from now, we're 70 30. I think that's about where our balance is at. And that'll still be a little bit lower than what's happening in the neighboring districts. But I also think that's because we have a lot less ability for families to exercise choice based upon some of the restrictions of what it means to live. In the urban, we're really, us and D 2 are the only two urbans in the system. But even D 2 is at 24% of non-traditional families supported.
Okay. So thank you, thank you for the presentation, I'm sure there will be a lot of discussion on this for the next few minutes at least. So the portfolio model that we have adopted over the last couple of years, it is showing results. We just have to adapt to the demands of our community at the same time. I remember I I just pulled up this chart that was in front of me, we did one, I think two years back, I think District 11 was the only district that had about 4,400 students
Yep.
in CSI approved charters. In this El Paso county, all the other school district didn't have any CSI approved charter. I think those numbers might have changed a little bit now that we've absorbed.
Because we've taken the transfers of about 1,500 of those.
Yep, 1,500 of those. It is the strategies that are involved in it, whether it is the pre-K that you are talking about, pathway schools. If we dig into this number, some of those numbers are not there, but I would assume that we do bleed out quite a bit from elementary to middle school and then from middle school to high school out there. And that's where we are ending up losing kids. And we already said that one of the bigger priorities this year is going to be the focus of high quality delivery of high quality section in the secondary to attract our parents back and students back. With that, discussions on Director Carey.
I just have two hopefully quick questions for Chris. Number one, do do we have any data on, you know, so we said, okay, we're losing, what was it, around 600 from traditional enrollment this year? Do we have any data on where they're going percentage wise? Because, you know, if they, if parents go to a charter school, at least from my perspective, that's kind of no harm, no foul. Charters frequently offer a very specific product that is not necessarily easy for us to emulate in District 11. And so if that's something that a parent wants, fine. But if they're going to D 20, D 49, I find that a little more puzzling, particularly in light of what you talked about with the phone conversations. And I'd just be really curious to know what the breakdown is. And then maybe the related question, you know, when we see loss in traditional enrollment, I think to us, that's in part at the board level a signal that something we're doing in our strategy is not quite working, at least for those traditional schools. I know we have the portfolio approach where, okay, students are, you know, parents are saying they want charter schools, great, let's bring them into the fold. That's, you know, what parents want, so that's all fine. But if, I guess I am just really curious, is there anything at all you can share with us about perceptions of parents of D 11 versus neighboring school districts? Is is there anything at all you can share with us that would help guide some of our own thinking at our level?
So there are two questions there, take which one you want first.
Either one's fine, I mean, so so here's the interesting thing, so when when I, when I speak to parents and I and I have the conversation about, I see your child is chosen Liberty High School instead of Doherty, can you tell me, just to walk through it? You know, the the initial response is a little guarded, which would be, you know, is understandable. But as the conversation goes, some of these conversations go on for 20 or 30 minutes. There, the reasons that they leave are are not anything catastrophic. They are not unhappy with District 11. They will say something like this, well, my daughter's best friend is going to Liberty and, you know, they, my daughter just wants to go. And and so I think that whole peer group is just going to go there. It's, I go, well, so can you talk how you made the decision between, you know, Liberty and Doherty? She's like, honestly, that's it, like my my daughter's friend. So there's nothing catastrophic about the work being done in D 11, this is what's interesting. Here's where it gets a little unusual, right? So if you take Scott Elementary, has the same SPL, slightly bigger at the time than Chupita. Scott Elementary, right, very close to the border of D 20, sent exactly zero 5th graders to D 20. Chupita sent 20 of the highest performing, right? That is, that's an anomaly, right? So we know now that we need to find out what is going on with those 20 and why they're leaving. It's going to be distinctly different possibly than why the kids are leaving from 8th grade at Jenkins, who've had a spectacular academic career in D 11. But a lot of times, the reason for the departures are really small. Families on the west side said, I went to the 5th grade night at Eagleview. And the students led the tours and the entire opening talk was about the electives and what your kids can do. When they went to a 5th grade night at a D 11 one, it just opened up with the discussion of safety and that was it. Like they, so they, their first thing was like, well, they're talking about how safe this school is, was it not safe? And then they did self-led tours. By the time that family got home and parked their car, the kid had made the decision they wanted to go to Eagleview. Simply because of the student led tour and all the electives. So there's not, people are leaving like, you know, this is the worst experience my kids ever had. We're talking about small, you know, moves that we can make to make the continuum more apparent to the families. But we have to make sure that our marketing, when they are experiencing the school, is a triple A service. And customer service matters and we we talk about it in our office all the time. And we make calls to schools when we see communications leaving the district that are subpar in terms of customer service. So really, we're not talking about anything catastrophic here, these are things that we can address, these are things that we can fix. They're they're just, they're, these aren't deep seated issues that families have. They're as simple as the things I just explained. Nine times out of 10, that's kind of the level of concern a parent will have. Like 5th grade night was just simply better at Eagleview, that's it, and the decision's made.
And to hit on your first question, Director Carey, it was, it's kind of an evolution of the office, so historically enrollment would provide overall data, right? Here's, there's a report that I think President Maupacken was referencing about the regional choice in and out, all of those things, we have all of that. Last year, we started to provide school level specific information, every single school got a data report and it said, here's the number of kids and here's where they're going, right? So our schools, now we haven't done that this year because it hasn't certified, but our schools knew exactly where kids were leaving to, what they didn't know is why, right? We had very, very little anecdotal evidence. The survey, we would have families, we would ask families to fill out, they didn't, or if they did, it was super generic. And so that's why the the strategy of like, no, I'm going to, I'm going to force these families to have a conversation with me and really tell me why, that's now evolving into a strategy. Very small strategies in some cases, like we're talking to Holmes about changing their their back to school night or their their tour night to to improve the experience a little bit. But it is kind of that next natural step now is why and what do we do about it?
And and for some families, it is simply geographic.
Yeah.
If you look at where Trailblazer and Chupita are, if you were to readistrict all of El Paso County, they make sense that they're they make sense that there are elementary schools that go to Eagleview, moreover than they do to the elementary schools that go to Homes. Homes is miles away, right next to Coronado, as compared to Chapita, and you you'll pull into the wrong parking lot if you're not paying attention, depending upon which way you come up the hill. You might pull into Eagleview and just be like, where's where's Tiffany? Right, oh, wrong school, oh, wrong district.
Yeah.
Right, so, some of our boundaries are a little less formal, and so, I think that creates for fluidity for families. I do like the fact now that we we have double growth at Homes, we have the growth from the Gifted Magnet Program, which has already exceeded its expectation for what we thought that enrollment would be. And we have generic increase in non-GMP kids that are going there. But the area of greatest losses, which I think you were kind of asking, continues to be the southeast part of our city. That we have the most choice-out permits from the Mitchell Boundary. We bottomed out at Mitchell, we're somewhere within the number we thought we would be, so there's not a great loss. But that's just because there's been nearly a decade now of great loss that's happened there. We have to find a way, and Jess is over there, she has spent some time over there, not just with Mitchell, but with the larger Mitchell SAC in the community, for us to position Mitchell as a destination and no longer the place that you're trying to leave from. We're confident in the program that we have there, we don't quite have the results that show that. But we're not getting trounced by Harrison and Sierra on SPF. Matter of fact, our SPF is now within a whisker of D twos. But it takes time for people to see those things as different than what they are. And if you also think of what D two offers, particularly in that area, they offer Atlas Prep. And Atlas Prep is a highly specific English language learner K twelve, are they K twelve? They're all the way K twelve, right?
Yeah.
And they have word of mouth that if you're a multilingual family and you need to get your kid to learn how to speak English, and you live down there, if you go to Hillside, they tell you, go to Atlas, that's where that's where families go. So, we have to make sure that, why are we short CLDE teachers at Swiger, at Galileo, and at Mitchell? When we wanna be competitive in a market that says that's the skill that we need to be able to bear. We're much better than we were before. It is disturbing for us to see that number, especially because last year, we had such a low number of loss in traditional. But I'm very confident in the team that we have to actually get the codified strategies instead of the, eh, we'll see what happens.
And just adding to what Chris was sharing, I live in that community, the Scott community. The word of mouth, the perception in that parent community is that Jenkins is the place, that continuum that you were talking about. It has naturally evolved from Scott to Jenkins, okay? That is still a work in progress from Chapita to Homes at this time, okay? That's why the parent community, the perception is Jenkins is a high-performing school. And it boils down to that you have the multiple elective opportunities at Jenkins, being a bigger bigger middle school, athletic opportunities or and all the other things that students want to. But at at the very end of it, it's just that students get a high-quality education out there. There has been stability of one principal out there over a long period of time, now we have a different principal out there. So, that pathway is clearly established, so there is zero loss from a fifth-grade student at Scott to the surrounding. But you will see that from Jenkins to Doherty. Okay, that loss happens all the time because that pathway, that continuum is not established. For some reason, there is a perception, and a lot of it goes to our secondary school performance as well. When we are a school district that is underperforming or tabbed as an improvement school, parents observe that and don't want to send their kids out there. And for whatever reason, they will say like, let's send their kids out to a different school that forms out there. But those are the perceptions that we are battling at this time. Any other thoughts or comments out there, Director Nelson?
I have actually a list of questions, so bear with me. Of the, sort of coming back to the data, and the six hundred students that have left more recently, is that in-boundary students? Like they were D eleven-boundary students, you said they'd been D eleven all along, but had they originally been choicing in, and then now they're going to their own district, or do you have any sense?
So, there's two different silos of kids, I think it's a good question. So, you have the, you we have a, we actually have every kid printed out that has left the district since July first of two thousand twenty-three, right? So, we can identify those students. The student loss gets a little trickier, cause in that mix is the seven hundred kids or the six hundred kids that were down, right? So, if we had those six hundred kids, now we don't, they're, they fall somewhere in this this kind of aggregate of kids. Like, so for example, you know, it's about six hundred to D twenty, it's about seven hundred to D forty-nine. It's about seven hundred to D two. In that mix is our student loss, cause we don't get, we also get permits from them. So, you're talking about like two separate groups. So, the ones that we can target is the ones that have notified the district saying, we aren't gonna go to Doherty, we're gonna go to Liberty, and then we have that contact information. In that larger group are the, are technically would be the loss of kids. So, we're looking at more of a random sample of calls, if that makes sense.
So, okay. That was, that was the second question I had, kind of what you're touching on of the number of kids going to each district. I have seen that data in past years, so it would be interesting for us to still get that information of the number of kids.
We will, we're not at Certified County yet.
Oh, I got you, okay.
So, the the crisscross that says who came in, who came out by number, will provide that, we're just not at Certified County.
Do you have the estimate of how many kids are choicing out that currently live in D eleven boundaries? Like last year, I remember it was around ten thousand kids. And so, when we talk about low birth rates, I'm kind of like, yeah, but we have ten thousand kids in our boundaries that are going somewhere else. So, do you have an estimate, is that still the number of where we're at, or we need to wait till we can?
We need to wait for that.
Okay.
But I I, the the anecdote is, we heard from a lot of the schools that were in the the fifteen to thirty kid loss, families moved. Not families moved to a different school, families moved. We no longer live in Colorado Springs, right? And so, those are seen as losses, but there's no requisite somebody comes back. The other anecdote is in bringing Thomas McLaren into the portfolio, you get a thousand kids. Six hundred of those kids were D eleven families. Four hundred of those kids are non-D eleven families. And so, again, in the portfolio strategy, when we lose families, for whatever reason, we lost them this year, and they make a choice, we're just trying to broaden the academic master plan to have more choice, to understand what is it about Liberty? So, Liberty is D twenty's CTE hub, for all intents and purposes. They offer some comprehensive programming as well. But they're doing something about communicating their CTE on the north side, moreover than we are talking about, which is actually the best CTE program in the state. But something happens about what you think you could get at Liberty, as compared to maybe what you thought that you could or you couldn't get at Lawson or at your comprehensive high school. So, we'll do that analysis. I would imagine that the number will show that there's not much different when you look at the aggregate. But I do think that when you look at the traditional, the choice outs will be higher than the choices. But I do think we should look at it in totality, that says Thomas McLaren brought in four hundred non-MLO pain families into our portfolio, as well as the six hundred who were already here. And there's still three thousand CSI students inside of District eleven boundaries for us to consider, how do we right-size that portfolio? And it does mean that we have to think differently about how we're staffed centrally. We have a ten percent change in our student population, of which for all intents and purposes, we have no central office authorization over. We authorize the school, but they don't call up Dr. Colicky and say, can you run your numbers through at Insights? They have their own way that they report their numbers to the state. We have some responsibility for that. But we have a shift in the portfolio, of which we have a very large per, um, central office staff to support a decreasing number of students that need that support. That's gonna require adjustment over time.
We absolutely will get that data once it's released, we'll make sure and get it to the board.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, I still have. I feel like a bright halo behind Director Bangs.
Uh, so, you mentioned a couple of schools that you're focusing on right now, sort of they've risen up as a priority. Is that because you saw a higher loss rate at those schools, like Chapita, Jenkins? Or was it just you had to pick a starting place? And at some point, you'll then shift to other schools that also have?
Yeah, it it it's it's a combination of those things. One of the things that we noticed is that in the north side of the town, there was a profile of kid leaving, right? So, we could cohort those kids. And then, and and unfortunately for those families that left, I I was able to speak with them. It was, the call wasn't to 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 try to bring them back as much as it was to find out why they left. But that same profile of kids still is now a new fifth grader. And so, when we look at who was leaving on the north side, we could sort of cohort the current kids that we have that fit that profile to make sure that we're targeting them. But like, you know, and that would be the same on the east side with Jenkins. But you know, another example is Fremont, which is landlocked, right? So, one of the things that Fremont struggles with, they lost the GMP, but that's not, that's not the issue. Take the GMP out of the, out of the conversation. Fremont's a landlocked school that has a, and everyone thinks they all go to Keller. It's not Keller, it's a smattering of schools around, it's Grant, it's Keller. And so, they lose, they hemorrhage these kids out to D eleven schools. But what, when you look at the data, three-quarters of those kids that would be in that boundary, that are in that boundary, never set foot in Fremont. So, they don't even know what they're leaving. They just heard that Keller is a great school, they heard that Grant is. So, what Fremont's doing now is these community events, so, and the teachers all have to be there. And so, the parents come, the kids play, they get a tour of the school, they can meet the teachers, they can learn about the school, and try to capture the kids that are actually in their catchment area before they commit to another school. Now, granted, we keep them because they're in D eleven, but but there's so many of those kids that have never set foot in their experience at school, they just decided to go to Grant instead. So, that, the community events at Fremont are really designed to open the school up early and often. They just had their, their first event was in October, they have a series of other ones coming up. But it's really to connect those parents, the families and the kids to the school, to ensure we get that decision made.
That was another question I had, when you're talking to families, have they visited the school prior to them? Like, did they visit Doherty prior to deciding to go to Liberty?
So, uh, so, great question. I would say the majority had. Now, this is anecdotal, so I can't say this is like statistically correct. But I would say, I think if I remember correctly, ninety families allowed their child to roll up to Doherty from Jenkins, right? So, that was gonna be their trajectory, and then made a decision to go to D twenty. Now, they never started at Doherty, but they had, right up until the summer, had sort of in their head thought, I'm definitely gonna go to Doherty, and then didn't. And then, about forty kids made the decision in eighth grade at Jenkins and said, well, before the year ended, before they rolled up, that we're gonna go to D twenty. And so, to me, it's kind of one and the same. And so, Doherty's effort to build that bridge with Jenkins is pretty important, because I just don't think the families can envision what their child's experience is gonna be like. And they're not leaving because they're unhappy, I mean, that's the key.
Well, yeah, and that that was what made me wonder if they're even checking out what their option is in D eleven, or if it's like, no, I've just heard really good things about this other school in a different district. So, they didn't even really go fully explore, and so, do we need to do more? What you were talking about with Fremont, that there are?
Yeah, so, and and Doherty will do their first night, uh, uh, middle of November. That invite went out to a pretty significant number of eighth graders. They're gonna have, you know, and I talked to the schools, like, this is the night you bring your A game. Like, you're selling the school, you need to be engaged, you need to be positive. The customer service has to be there, the programming that you're gonna offer is gonna have. So, really driving that home, the customer service, but those nights early in November, you still have a chance to to convince those families that that is their best option.
Yeah.
Because it is, we think, yeah.
Very good. The, I I, these questions now are gonna be around the pre-K topic. So, I understand that it's sort of out of our hands how it's decided what schools our pre-K students are able to attend. It sounds like that parents put in their top three, and I forget what the program's called.
Uh, join, joining initiatives, this is the partner that runs the portal for the state.
Okay, so this question may not be relevant then, and tell me, do we have waitlists for some of our schools to get into pre-K? Like, is there opportunity to expand pre-K? I know more than just the two schools that don't have it, recognizing that there's budget constraints because that's recurring dollars. And so, that would be a conversation the board would need to have as far as prioritizing recurring common, uh, recurring dollars. But I I'm just also thinking in terms of, like, high FRL schools. FRL is where we see our biggest gaps in academic achievement. And so, if you can help kids get further ahead when they're coming to us by expanding, um, the opportunities?
Right now is, we have a healthy number of seats for the demand.
Okay.
We want the demand to catch up. What I wanna do is not have schools excluded, because I want the neighborhood to feel that I can go to my neighborhood elementary school for pre-K and not feel as obligated to this kind of lottery portal system that the state's running. We, our recommendation to the state, which many of the districts have said, is give pre-K enrollment back to the districts, and then let the, 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 the reason that it's gone to a portal is it's public and private that is now in universal pre-K. So, you could open up in the Lauren Nelson pre-K at your own home and be in the portal, and people can choose you. And so, to bring equity to that process, the state has created an algorithm that it's not just I live across the street from an elementary school, I'm gonna go enroll in the pre-K. So, we're still working that out with the state. We don't need more overall seats, what we need is not to have schools that don't have seats.
Okay.
And just to answer one more of your questions, you you talked about funding. What we have found, we were very cautious last year with UPK funding because it was the first year. And so, the general funds supplemented that significantly to make sure. And what we're finding is they are getting adequate funding to be self-sufficient.
Okay.
So, that's good, so what that means is.
We're actually over budgeted.
We are over budgeted, yes. What that means is, if we add, if we add programs, we have full faith that the funding is gonna cover, and it's not gonna come on the district to be like, hey, you added that, now you need to fork up,
Okay.
um, hun, you know, four hundred thousand dollars to fund this.
That's.
They really have provided sufficient funding to run those programs.
That's great. So, I think what I'm hearing is that, at this point in time in our district, there isn't necessarily a need to expand o- other schools' pre-K opportunities. The demand just isn't there, like, we're not seeing the waitlist. And my thought was, you know, do you start looking at full-day offerings, especially again at those high FRL schools? And helping parents?
If Sarah Carson were here, were here, who represents universal pre-K for us and our team as our early ed leader, she would tell you the story of how our answer was yes. Do we offer half-day, AM, PM, full-day, three-year-old, four-year-old? And we went into the portal, the answer was yes to every school. Then we let the demand signal match, and then we adjusted the programs against it. The challenge that we have is that Steel and Bristol don't have UPK programs in them. And both of them are not simple of just relocating an adult because there's a little toilet sink that we didn't use yet. We're gonna have to be creative in how we solve that, but there are two of our highest-demand elementary schools. So, I know that in both those neighborhoods, as soon as you say we're opening up UPK, every one of those families that has a pre-K age kid is gonna get themselves into that space.
Okay. So, I'll just end with, when you were talking about the customer service mindset, that I have written that down. That's where we have to shift, and so, just the student-based budgeting is definitely come, going to come into play as far as some of the accountability and incentives. But also, how do we help the schools shift into that mindset of we're here to provide a service and, you know, to families and that customer service type of a mindset, if it isn't already there?
It's, we have a customer service training plan in place, Shawna leads that. Matter of fact, she was at Adams today, training the whole front office staff on how it's, hi, we're here to help, and welcome to Adams, and join the Wolf Pack. Not to say that people aren't doing that, but we have an entire program that we've developed internally and with some external partners, of which Shawna is the lead trainer for that.
But it is a really great point, Director Nelson, it doesn't get talked about enough, which is, it's really clear the determinants of school choice, right? Here and locally and nationally, and there's lots of things. There's performance and safety and programs and all of those things, but what rise above, rises above, rises above all of those is experience. Families don't leave schools they love, they don't. Now, if they're moving out of the state, they do, but if they move across the city, they'll make that drive.
Yeah.
Right? Uh, and so, the experience, and there's lots of things that come into soon, experience, but that experience is what matters. And not just like I have to protect from not having a terrible experience. The differentiator right now is, I'm having a pretty good experience, but I might have a great experience somewhere else, right? And so, that's, that's something for us to key in on and and really. Right? And so that's, that's something for us to key in on and, and really address.
Yeah, and it sounds like you are already doing that work, like you said, with helping homes with how, shifting how they do their orientation. Like, they didn't think of that themselves, and that's okay. So how do we help our schools figure out what is, what works well? So, great job. Um, I'll just add that the survey sounds like a great idea. I don't know how you're gonna incentivize families to actually fill it out. I'll just caution you there. Like, how do we make them want to tell us if they're coming back or not? Like, I'm pretty sure I got a survey this past spring, and I don't remember there being like this high, like, why I should take the time to tell you where I'm going.
And that's why Chris is here.
Yeah. Good luck.
So, so far, I do everything he asks me to do, so I think families will be responsive too.
Yeah.
And one of the things that you talked about, Chris, and I can only share my experience on it. It's about the open houses that we have in, whether it's going to be in a middle school or a high school. I've attended several of those open houses, that they are more dynamic, engaging, energetic, student-led tiers. You want to walk into that school and you feel like you belong in there, that school spirit, jumping out of that. Sometimes that's lacking, and I'm being honest with you, when I walk into some of those. It's kind of like, okay, we got to do it, it's programmed, and that's what you're saying, like, bring in the A game. And we got to make sure that when it's, and hopefully the principals understand that, that budgeting, student-based budgeting is attached with this, let's spend some money if it is necessary in that propaganda on that day to make sure that parents and the families feel that engagement. And the teachers are invested, that personal connections take place. So, um, any other thoughts or questions? I, Director Art or Director Hafley, you haven't had any chance. You get, Director Art.
My questions were asked by these students.
Just to follow up on what you just said, walking into some of those open houses, there's maybe they, they know, cause I'm a board member, but it's like, what happens when I walk in the door? Is there someone to greet me? And if there's not, I don't know where to go as a visiting person. Um, so, and, and some schools are doing that, I think, but maybe every school is part of their customer service aspect. Um, two other thoughts that occurred to me as I'm sitting here. One is feedback from, um, a community member, it's probably been at least a year. And that is his, um, so the parent was looking for the middle school in fourth grade. And he said, where am I supposed to go for this information? And I'm not finding it, I'm not seeing it, there's no opportunity. So I don't know if we can expand our open houses to invite the fourth grade families as well. And in the case of high school, inviting seventh grade families. And because I was one of those parents, you know, even at three, I'm like, where am I gonna send my kid to kindergarten? You know, and, and later trying to make those decisions way in advance, just to have some kind of plan. Um, so that would be feedback from a community member. And for the destination schools, if we know, you know, we have, um, a hundred kids moving up from a, uh, a couple of different elementary schools. If I, this, this is a terrible thing in a way, it's like, how do the principal call them from, you know, the destination school? And that's a lot of work, I recognize that. But it's all about those relationships, obviously, and customer service. And not that I think that all those principals aren't gonna like me next time they see me. But, you know, if they call, or their dean calls, or a teacher calls because they know of a child's interest, that's gonna start building those relationships and, and inviting them to the open house personally. Or calling them after and saying, did you have any questions? We wanna see you next year, that kind of thing.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that really is pretty intense.
Yeah.
But.
We, we're, we're in total agreement. We wanna build all those things out, you know. Anecdotally, Gabe at Bristol had his Suzuki one, two, three violinists play, uh, Christmas concert at the Coronado Auditorium. And at first, there was pushback from the families, like, no, we go into the Cafe Gymnasium at Bristol, that's what we always do. But then when you see your kid on stage at Coronado, cause my son's a violinist and I remember it, I go, my kid's gonna be first violin at that high school, and they're in second grade. But you see the future. Now, a hundred other things happen. You get relocated, maybe your kid gives up the violin. But we need to give every family a dozen reasons to choose one of our schools instead of waiting for them to tell us why they chose our school. Make them, give twelve reasons why they don't go. Why, and so matter of fact, just today, the area superintendents were asking, uh, we get such great, um, feedback on our junior ROTC programs. How do we create just an interface with our middle schools and those junior ROTC programs? So now, I'm not opening a junior junior ROTC program. But how is it that I have one of the guys from Captain Thomas's or Colonel Joey's team come down to the middle schools that says, hey, these are the values base that come into junior ROTC. If you come to our school, you can be a part of this, that, or the other thing. We, we're, we're still in a wait mode instead of a go-get mode. Now, the good news is, this all gets solved by student-based budget. Because when, all of a sudden, when you said it, it's gonna be about seven thousand dollars worth of authority per student, cause we're gonna take the couple of thousand that we need to run the district. But when a school says, if I get ten kids, that's seventy thousand dollars, that's an extra F T E to do something different. Like, they're gonna be funded for the number of kids they get, but if they get ten more, that's seventy thousand dollars more to get an extra F T E. That gives a ton of authority and opportunity. So I think really seeing that through line through. But there's this power in saying, you know, we expect you to be a Spartan. Like, let's just buy Spartan t-shirts for every kid at Russell and, and Jenkins, and let them wear them for a day, and then decide that they don't wanna be a Spartan. Right? I mean, I, I'm not buying t-shirts, I'm beating these t-shirts. My point is, is that it's, it's a connection at the.
What I was thinking about is at the.
Hillary, Hillary did it.
Yeah, Doherty Homecoming, uh, football game, they had cheerleaders, young cheerleaders, like, uh, the Doherty cheerleaders brought in the elementary school cheerleaders with their, uh, t-shirts on. Four, five, six, seven, yeah, six, seven, eight-year-olds out there coming to the middle of the field. And all the parents are out there taking pictures of them. You can see that connection being.
Right, and so also the investment the board has made in the tracks and fields at the high school. So now you can have your middle school semi-intermural soccer game not at the bad field at your middle school, but go have it at your host high school. Or have the championship game, or show, show people that you believe this is where they're gonna go to school. It's, some of those, the, the, the joke I make all the time is when you build an office park, don't build any sidewalks, wait six months to figure out how people change buildings, and then put the sidewalks over there. We, we've gotta have some, we know where these people are going, we've gotta codify those sidewalks. We know what those pathways are. We need to make those investments and make the follow-up calls. The Doherty staff should not call Henry Elementary School and think they're gonna get more than three kids from Henry years from now to end up at Doherty. But they should be spending time calling everybody at Freedom, everybody at Martinez, and everybody at Scott, even though the kids are three years away from them.
Back to you, Director. You've got more questions?
It's just the only question, I think, with, um, like, slide ten and, well, any of them, I guess, the, the current data. So just, we're not out of October yet, so is, is our October monthly report? Is it just from the beginning, like, October first, October fifth, October tenth?
Are, are you referring to? The October monthly data. So I, I asked the team to simplify the data.
Yeah, per month.
What, what they originally put up was our October butts and seats from last year was this, that turned into that for count. And then they had, here's our count for the, our, our butts and seats this year, and then a question mark for what we're gonna have for count. And I said, just compare the two butts and seats, which was, I don't know if there's a particular day in October.
October first.
October first.
Yeah.
So that's what we think, if everything went perfect from every kid in the seat, if we had zero percent loss in accounting, or some other school claims the kid because they left on the fifth and they spent twenty days in D forty-nine, if it was a zero-loss system, that would be our certified number. But I just said, just doing apples to apples, don't make it apples and oranges, cause I don't know what the, what the count will be. But the count will be up because we added over a thousand kids with two charter transfers, and we've lost six hundred kids traditionally. So it'll be up three to four hundred kids overall.
Okay. And I guess the other, because of course the numbers shift and, um, I, my, my curiosity especially would be like around some of our alternative to education campuses. I would be curious to see the monthly ups and downs, the, the counts in later months, if we can do that.
We can do that for last year, and I, I think.
Yeah, we, we track it, we track it every month for the last fifteen years, so. You can really get some, some great data. But yeah, we're happy to, to send last year's monthly enrollment.
You'll see, uh, can you pull up the slide that had the ups and downs and arrows? Cause I think you can pull the AECs off of there and see that they're not dramatically different, but they normally add kids over the course of the year.
Right. What my only complaint about that is, an arrow can, down or up can mean one child or forty, and there's really no way for us to know as, sitting here looking at that. It's great. Oh, look, they went up, but, oh, no, they went down. Did they go down one?
Yeah, so, so here's how we did that, just, just for transparency, uh, and Chris can attest to this. In elementary schools, about half a class. If they're up more than about half a class, we put up. If they're down more than half a class, we put down. If they're within half a class of kids, we kept that, um, at neutral. Uh, and then it was a full class for secondary schools. Because we were gonna do percentages, we were gonna do lots of things, but the last thing I wanted to put up there is a number. And then that number changed between now and when we certify, and then, well, we thought you said. And I didn't wanna say like, well, if, whether they're down two or up one, they're, they're stable, right? Um, so that's kind of where it is, but we can absolutely send the, the actual data of enrollment, um, counts by month for last year, so you can kind of see the trend.
Okay. So that will be a report that you can just mail into the board.
Okay.
Okay.
No, that's super helpful, knowing that it's like half a class, end of class. And, um, yeah, part of the, my interesting comparison is like, where do we start the year and where do we end?
Sure.
And also, and, and semester change too is of interest, but.
We always end up.
Thank you.
Up at the end of the year, and we don't get paid for it.
Right.
So that's a, that's a legislative lobby thing of some states do two-year split funding that they pay you for in the fall, and then they pay you in the spring. Because so many systems absorb kids over the course of the year that you never get funded for. Now, the way we talk about that is, please come to us even in May, cause now I believe that I am gonna be able to keep you then for next October. Student mobility, not in District Eleven, student mobility particularly in urban or stressed systems is not just a challenge to enrollment, it's certainly a challenge to achievement. You saw the numbers that David ran last year, uh, on our SPF, our Cmas, that the co-horted kids greatly outperformed the average, what we just call snap of the chalk line. Getting both staff and families to think about stability gets us a lot more clarity on what the right strategies are. Cause I don't know, like, when I talk about if people left, I don't know if I'm chasing down the Air Force and the Army. Like, please, 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 don't do your PCSs until we get to matriculation years, or, you know, yeah, I mean, it's a challenge in understanding student population mobility, but we, uh, have the team now. And we have a lot more data than we did before. We do have a lot more data. I think you can see on the opportunity academies there, that, you know, achieve is, is up. Um, and then generally speaking, the others are down, Tesla was up a little bit as well. But normally Tesla and Biju start the year lower and increase over time, as does digital achieve. Um, I think we're rethinking about how we talk about Odyssey this year as well. Um, i- it's not really an alternative education campus, it's a, um, accelerated high school experience. So I think we're gonna kind of pull Odyssey off of that list. Um, especially the way the state reports against AECs as compared to early colleges.
Thank you.
Okay. You're good, Director Art?
I don't see Director Bankas any longer. Director Bankas, if you have any questions?
No, I'm fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so, uh, one question I had, are we tracking, like, last year, we increased the number of pre-K students in our, uh, elementary schools. Are we tracking how many of those pre-K students?
Recule it up.
Recule it up.
We, we, we set some goals around it. I wanna say our, our foundational point was sixty-five percent. Um, we set some goals to get into the mid-eighties, uh, and so we'll, again, as, as we certify, we'll start to track how close are we, what's our, our goal for the rest of the year and then next year.
Are we also tracking, uh, cause we added a lot of after-school programming as kind of an enrollment strategy? Are we still keeping an eye on that and seeing?
We've increased, I think we've doubled the number of after-school programs. We can identify in a separate page of the certified report, these are the schools that have after-school programming. Um, I can't quite call it causation without correlation yet. But, um, I do think that we will see that some of the anecdotal things we've gotten from people is, is well, that's a school that offers six-to-six care.
Yeah.
And I need that.
Yeah.
And so, um.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, um, thank you. Thank you for your team putting together this report. Um, um, my closing thoughts as we summarize this, and we had a healthy discussion about this. The portfolio model is working, we are bringing kids into the school. Um, while we are investing in other strategies to see if we can increase that continuum of students matriculating from elementary to middle school and middle school to high school, and pre-K to kindergarten as well. Um, Superintendent Gao talked about delivering, um, stern message to the gatework principals yesterday. I was there at least to listen to part of that message, yeah. And, uh, he was talking about the stern reality of student-based budgeting and what each schools will have to face in the future, and how it benefits those principals to go out and seek students in the community. I'm still assuming we have eight or nine thousand students that live within District Eleven boundaries that choose other options other than District Eleven schools or District Eleven charter schools. So there is a potential out there to get more students. What I have, in my experience, at least, uh, come to realize is that school-building principle makes all the difference. When you have that dynamic principle that is willing to go out there and sell the school and go over and beyond what is necessary. Parents choose that school, and a living, breathing example is in the neighborhood where I live in. Two years back, I got constant feedback about how Freedom Elementary School was not the right school. Parents were choicing out, that they were not satisfied with the supports that they got from the principal in that school. And then we have a new building principal there, and now Freedom is one of the schools that are showing an uptick. Not only because it's got a gifted magnet program, but because the word in the community is that that is the school that you have to be in. So it behooves the principals, student-based budgeting is one of the reasons. But it also requires that they go out there and sell their individual school with the supports that you guys are providing along with the Dr. Weiss's team out there. To go and sell that school, whether it's going to be that open houses, the, uh, mid-year when you bring the students from the lower level to the higher level to visit the schools. Whatever it is necessary, Superintendent Gao is willing to explore all these various opportunities, provide the resources. But it's up to the principals to deliver on this going forward. Okay, um.
Um, would it be like a huge pain to go in and add to this slide your definition of up or down? That it's a half a class?
I can.
I just know, I often go back in Board DAX and look at previous, like, years past to help me remember things. So that would be really helpful.
Sure, thank.
Thank you.
Okay. So let's move on. I know that this enrollment update went a little bit longer than what we had, um, uh, you know, said, projected as far as the time goes, but I was keeping a tracker time, and today's agenda is relatively light. And because of that, uh, we, you know, uh, increased the amount of time that we spent on this conversation. The next item on the agenda is the Board of Education Self-Evaluation. Um, uh, first, I want to, uh, thank Vice President Hafley. Um, she, uh, worked with Dr. Kalaki in putting together this document, uh, Chief Art, who is also joining us. And then, uh, thank the board also for, uh, timely completion of this, um, um, evaluation document. And then the report was put together. Uh, and actually, I'll first, uh, if, um, hopefully the board had the time to look at, um, all the results that were there. Um, we can look at it slide by slide, or we can go to the final slide where most of it is, uh, so, um, Melissa, if you can go to the final slide, and while she's going to the final slide, I'll first turn it over to Vice President Hafley. Do you want to share anything about the process? Um, any major takeaways for you, and then the board can also, and then Dr. K can also summarize, uh, what the major findings were.
So this was, um, sent out, uh, to this new board, and we can't compare it to last year's self-evaluation since there are new people on the board now. Um, so those questions, uh, some of those questions are going to be rewritten for next year so that they're a little bit more, um, clear and concise. Uh, six of seven of us filled this out, um, totally anonymous. And, um, the, the results seem to put us on, um, an even keel. We, we seem to gel with, um, very similar answers on this self-evaluation. And I, and I wanna thank, uh, Dr. K and Nicole for, uh, driving this.
Dr. Kalaki, any major takeaways from you?
So these takeaways that you see up on the screen, they're really being driven by just responses that were either moderate, uh, moderate evidence or no evidence. And there was a very small smattering of, of no evidence, so that was the green bar, if you remember reviewing that. Those were primarily around things. I think I think to Dr. Ha- to Director Hafley's point, some of the questions being worded in a way, for example, annual review of all policies. That's kind of inherent in the question to make sense why there would be no evidence, because that's not actually a thing that's being done. So I did put something around, just out of clarity, around what policy review processes look like. Not to make a case that everyone needs to be reviewed annually, but just the communication there. On the other, there was no evidence was some of the some of the roles of the board to government agencies. That that one is a bit unclear as well. And then there was just a small smattering of how the board interacts and its developed relationship with students in particular. So most of these areas of growth are around things that have moderate evidence, which is still a relatively strong qualitative qualitative findings, so building positive relationship with students, just investing in methods that that build that satisfaction and monitoring for stakeholders. That was actually, I don't think there was a rating below a moderate amount of evidence, and there's pretty pretty consistent strong, strong to exemplary evidence. I mentioned the policy review, and then adherence to policy and duties, developing systems that ensure greater consistency and clarity among members, I think with the group that you have many, many balls up in the air already, in addition to your work that you're doing here. Just continued communication of expectations, timeliness, and those last two bullets really being together. Timeliness and communication, how do we want our business rules to function, and how we how we run our duties, and how we communicate with our constituents. So overall, the takeaway is that there's a healthy level of respect, collaboration, and shared vision. The answer is we're all collapsing mostly into a strong and exemplary evidence, so. Any questions beyond that?
Okay. Nicole, any other for you, anything stand out? Okay. Open it up for board feedback. And if anything stands out where the board can get professional development based on the survey, that's something that we can explore at future board retreats, that's one. You want to go?
I do. The thing that stood out to me most was the timely response to community feedback. The, it's my understanding that the board has stated that responses would be done in a timely manner, but there's no definition of what a timely manner means. So that could be, you know, to me, that's a twenty-four to forty-eight hour turnaround, personally, and for other people, it's not. So I think it's important that we define what a timely manner is, and we come to an agreement on that.
So just to provide some context to the board, this is discussed in the board operating manual.
Yes.
And it falls under the responsibilities of the secretary to the board. And I'm not talking about Ms. Olson up there, so, just to make it clear. But I think a year or so back, when we were looking at the board operating manual, at that time, there was a definite number attached out there, was three business days or something like that, or four?
Maybe three, five, it was.
Yeah, something like that, but then the board had a conversation at that time and changed it to timely. It's a different board at this time, so if there is a need to put a more specific time and the concern is that maybe some of the emails that the board received are not being responded back in a timely fashion, is that?
Sandra, Mr. M.
What's that? Oh, Sandra, Director Bankas.
I just wanted to rest and wreck a conversation on this topic that we've had before. And we know that sometimes life situations get in the way, and we had a definite time. I don't know, I think it was seven days or something, or maybe it was three. That that held us to a timeline that doesn't work over time, just because things do come up and things do change. So timely means timely, and yet, as we've noticed, sometimes those emails end up in junk. And fortunately, we get reminders from other board members to check our junk mail, and that really helps. Because it's not a practice, at least not for me. And I think that as adults and as professionals, timely means within a reasonable amount of time, but that timeframe again, is dependent upon what's going on, and, you know, everybody knows my story. So to say you have to respond within a week, it wasn't practical. I think timely means timely, and then my emails in response, when they were not timely, was to say, please excuse me, blah, 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 and made a statement so that the receiver would understand that wasn't ignoring them, however, life interfered. So I'm still proponing, proposing timely.
When you just put timely, it leaves it up to interpretation, individual interpretation as what the timely is. Timely to Director Hafley is twenty-four to forty-eight hours, timely to another person is seven days, so, go ahead.
I just, to Director Bankas's point, what I'm hearing is that you're maybe speaking more to the exception, where, yeah, life happens. You go on a vacation, things come up, illness. So I think it would be good to have better guidance for not the exception, but understanding that there will be grace when things do happen. So I know when I was helping cover for Director Bankas for a period of time, this is a little bit of a side topic, but Ms. Hidalgo was helping me to keep track of like if I missed some emails, so I don't know if that's something we could ask the board secretary.
I think she's already doing that, aren't you doing?
You are helping, okay.
She is doing it.
I wasn't sure if that was happening.
Could she'll sometimes ping us with like, hey, I don't know if anyone saw this.
Yeah.
Because it ended up in a Stan folder or what have you.
Yeah, I didn't know if you were working directly with Director Jorgensen to help him.
I think she is.
Great, thank you for doing that, and just also.
To the point where it becomes like, you know, she would say, how much should I remind him of, you know, kind of thing, you know, like, she wants to
Gotcha. Gotcha, yeah.
understand that the boundaries of what.
Yeah. And that's, I was just going to say, recognizing he's not here to be part of this conversation. I think he should definitely be able to speak up and say what he is capable of doing. But to me, given that we are volunteers, I would say a week or five business days would be a good guideline. I could not personally do twenty-four to forty-eight hours. But I'm not taking on that role of secretary, so maybe the expectation would be different if you were the secretary. So I would never sign up for that if that was the expectation.
Have you all thought of eliminating your emails and just using a Let's Talk button? Which then gives a report how long things are open for. I mean, we get all kinds of metrics off of Let's Talk. I can see which schools are most responsive to the community. We have some of those timelies, but then sometimes the data just shows you. And I think, because nothing gets lost in Let's Talk. The only way somebody can submit an issue to the board is through a program of which then you all have equal or equitable access to, or just the secretary, but you can't deny what the report says. And when somebody says it, because Google, it says it's an external person, you've never heard from them before, and it literally says, by the way, that school is literally on fire, and it goes into your junk email. Let's Talk removes that that chance of lost communications.
So instead of having on our contact us, our school board email address, would instead say Let's Talk, like a link to that is what you're saying.
Yeah, we can do that certainly, but that's not the issue here. The issue is that we still need to respond back to those emails, so. And the amount of emails that go to junk mail are few and far between, I think it's once in a while that it happens.
We had quite a flurry at the end of September, unfortunately.
Yeah, but we caught on to it.
But that is the exception.
Yeah, but I've talked to Ms. Olson about it, and she said that once a week, she can check the junk folder and send the emails, and it's a pretty simple process. She said, so it's not putting extra work on her plate either, so. Where does the board on it? Do you want to wait till Director Jorgensen comes back and have this conversation with them at that time? Or if the, like, we heard two board members state, you know, and then we heard Director Bankas just want to stay with the timely.
Barth, I think that since the person who's most heavily affected by this, we should honor that person's position with him being in the room.
Bring it up at a retreat or a work session at that time, but in speaking with Secretary Jorgensen, I will just, one-on-one conversation that I'm having, I'll just say three to five days if we can get it at that time, and then the board can provide guidance, formal guidance in the retreat.
Barth, I think one thing that might be worth considering is what our own expectations for responding to emails are, in the sense that if the response is, you know, thank you for the feedback, we read and understood your email, that's not that hard to do, and that doesn't take that much time to do. But a lot of the emails that we get, for obvious reasons, are precisely on areas of disagreement and contention. You know, we're getting a lot of emails right now on the non-legal name change question, where you have half the people saying you gotta do it this way, and you have another half of the people saying you gotta do it that way. What is what is our expectation for the board secretary? Do we want our board secretary just saying, thanks for the feedback, we've heard and understood? Do we want our board secretary saying, well, the consensus in the board seems to be this right now, like, I I don't know, I've been here less than a year, I'm just asking the question. What do we actually want our messaging back to emails to look like?
Well, the thing is, it differs from situation to situation. There is no cut-and-dry answer. It could be as simple as, like, when we are talking about ACA, which is the name change policy, there is no specific board board consensus on that at that point in time, so all would be a simple thing. Your feedback will help guide us in, you know, coming up with the policy ASAP. So that could be a simple thing, but some could be a decision that the board has already made on which then the board secretary can provide a little bit more information. So it just depends from situation to situation, I would say. I don't think there's a cut-and-dry answer. And a lot of the other things could be that when we, the board receives it, it just is directing it to the appropriate district person to let them answer. If they are asking us a specific question about a school, about our operational decision, it's just directing it to the superintendent and saying, hey, could you take, there's something happening in the bathrooms here or something, happening in the high school here. That's not our purview, it's just directing it to the person. So timely response goes to the people. I know that some people may get frustrated when they are sending emails to the board, and they don't receive anything back, and some could be, if I see any emails that is, you know, like a urgent matter, that requires, that threatens the safety of a kid, or bullying situation, or whatever it is. And I didn't see a response back, I usually direct it to the operation, Superintendent Gao, and then say, hey, this is a bullying matter with a child, you need to attend to it. So just depends from situation to situation.
That was like a point, like, if it really is just, we want some, want a reply, we're in receipt of your email, thank you, we, you know. Then I could totally see that being twenty-four to forty-eight hours.
So that is actually something that Ms. Olson already does.
Yeah.
I've seen that on the emails she responds to.
She does.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And and we can edit, you know, whatever it is that she that she says, and and yeah, that that would be nice, but when somebody sends in an email, they're obviously moved to do so. And when they don't hear back from somebody, I can tell you from personal experience, that if somebody doesn't respond back to me, I'm not gonna be too pleased. And then that sends a pall over the entire board, and we are working here pretty hard for people and for the kids in the school district, and for us not to respond to people in a timely fashion, that that doesn't sit well with me, and it makes us look pretty bad. So I.
Okay, so, go ahead.
We were talking about customer service earlier.
Yeah.
And I think that falls exactly to that point, and even if it's a fairly simple acknowledgement, I mean, people expect to hear from us, and personally, I've started emailing everybody, or most people back, because I don't want to be associated with a non-responsive team, so.
But when you're responding back, you're responding on your own.
I I actually say, you've heard from Melissa Olson, and you will be hearing on behalf of the board from our board secretary eventually, and I don't put that word in there, but it's tempting, but it's, yes, and it's like, thank you, I want to personally acknowledge your email. Because otherwise, how do they know that it didn't go to our junk folder?
Yeah.
I mean, that's, and and to be fair, some did, but a couple weeks is weeks too long.
Okay.
Sorry, Jason.
We will discuss it.
We can let it sit there and wait for Jason.
Yeah.
Yeah, we will discuss it, and we will bring it back at this, but the feedback that I will give Secretary Jorgensen is at this time, maybe five days, by the end of the week, from, if we can get it out there. And things happen in lives, people go on vacation or get sick, and if that is there, we will provide some place as is necessary.
And coverage, if we need to.
Right.
So that was my next point, so maybe we should, we can have a second in place for for that, because five days seems a little bit long as well.
I know, by far.
Well, I mean, I I think if it's like a substantial response, I'm okay with the five days, but I also like the idea of it not just coming from with Ms. Olson, but from the secretary.
It does take time to to gather information as well.
Yeah, but like, be within the twenty-four or forty-eight hours of we are in receipt of your response, coming from the secretary.
Yes. Yes.
So I want to still keep that as part of the conversation when we have with Director Jorgensen.
Okay, we'll have this conversation with Jason at some point in time at a future vote session when he gets back. And I will certainly ask.
In a timely fashion, right?
Yes, I will certainly ask Jason to also refer to this portion of the vote session and the discussion that took place within the board, so he is aware of one transparent out there. Anything else stand out out there as far as there is some, you know, confusion about the policy process, it looks like, anything else that stand out to the board at this time?
With the policy process, I'll reference like back to Casby, where we set up a policy review where within two, within a year, we go over every policy. Now, we have fewer as a board there than we have as a board and as a district here. But if we, I guess, this and also a stakeholder focus, to me, the question really is, what are our expectations for ourselves? If we aren't gonna make it through them all annually, then we should probably, and and we don't expect to, then we should probably rewrite that question, like you were mentioning, in the future.
Yeah.
You know, are we moving policies forward, or that will move the district forward? With a stakeholder focus, I build positive relationships with students. What does that look like to us? What is our hope for that? What is our expectation?
So, can I, if I might, these are just, I do this, 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 or this, there's no chance for comments.
Right.
Are you, are you advocating for a comment section?
Right, I'm saying. No, I'm advocating that we maybe at a retreat or or at some point in time, and maybe as professional development, what does that, what does a positive relationship with students look like for a board member? I talked to twenty students, twenty, you know, students came and shared comments, is that my stakeholder opportunity there? You know, is that sufficient to hear back from students? What about parents? So just really, I think we could explore that, especially in anticipation of ever taking another one of these again, so what what does it look like? What are our expectations? So are we successful, or are we not?
Kind of taking a step back and just thinking about what is our role as a board member and the different pieces to that, like student involvement, high-level governance, like, yeah. So that we know how to build out the questions.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, is there? So is there any specific directive from the board regarding this, like, hey, we want a professional development or this, this, and this, so we can then work with Adlin to figure that out at a future board retreat? Is there anything that stand out to you that, other than what that positive relationship is with stakeholders?
Well, I'd say that I support monitoring stakeholder satisfaction. I think we should explore that one as a board. And again, what does that mean? Because to whoever, y'all, whoever said no evidence, to me, like, the five E, it it might not be board stakeholder satisfaction or satisfaction with us, but we, to me, we do gather the information in the five E data. But we, to me, we do gather the information in the five E data to understand. People are happy with the district, which is sort of a reflection on us. That that's, I probably went with at least some evidence of that, so. That's a question I think we might explore as a team.
Okay, so we'll talk about that during the agenda setting meeting and see if at a future board retreat, this is something that can be explored. Uh positive positive relationship with stakeholders, we do town hall meetings already. Um we do visits to schools, we have, you know, um the stakeholder, the board engagement with staff. In that coffee and conversation with the superintendent.
Steel tomorrow morning.
Yeah, let's go.
That's you? Okay, great.
Six fifty, I know there was some challenge last time with you, everyone knowing the time.
Yeah, got it on my calendar.
It's normal waiting. Okay.
I'll be back.
Okay, brighten the day tomorrow.
I will say that that works for a lot of the board members, but not all of us.
Yeah.
So like, that's an example where like getting my own kids to school.
Yep.
I just can't typically make those very easily. So um just that is an example of where we can do those things, but there are other opportunities.
Absolutely, and if you can't make it, just let us know about it and then another board member can be there. And that's how sometimes all of us can participate in all of the things.
Yeah.
There could be an evening activity where I've got another commitment, I can be there. And that's when I will lean on you or you to go there and represent the board. Um and that's how we support each other.
We also have the student voice. Um I can't think of the right word, wording that we call it, but we we get involved with the kids. Um it's like a s- like a student council, student advisory board, yeah.
Student advisory board, yeah. So that's the superintendent's, not ours.
Yes, but I meant that.
Did, where did we land on creating the student board liaison-ish process?
The students let us know that that wasn't where they wanted to start. They wanted to start talking amongst themselves and bringing ideas forward. That is what the group said last spring. But what they also recommended was the superintendent sounding board was getting the same voice over the whole course of the year. And so this year, what we're doing is that student advisory council is hosted at each school all fall, all the comprehensive high schools. And we're able to get more voices, goodness.
More?
We're able to get more voices um from a wide array of students at the comprehensive high school. And then we have student ambassador roles, fourteen students. That when they can, attend at each of the high schools, they're writing summaries, they're leading the Q and A portion of that meeting. Um and those will rotate all fall and then in second semester, they'll come and convene just like they did previously. Taking in all of that voice that they've gathered from the fall semester to determine what problems they wanna tackle. Um the last one was at Mitchell, we talked about student agency. And the next one will be at Coronado Monday, where we will be talking about peak experiences is the main topic. But then students can surface other topics as well. Would it be appropriate for board members to go to those?
Absolutely, yeah.
It looks like Director Hayfley is already.
Maybe we could get it, but. Yeah, well, and Mitchell being, you know, school assigned, it would have been nice to know. So maybe we can get an invitation for those.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh anything else at this time? Okay.
I think we get to each high school twice in a year or so.
Invites to the.
Yep.
Student voices. Okay, but that that's all is there on the work session agenda. If there is nothing else to discuss at this time, we will adjourn the work session at five fifty-five P M. And we'll have to go to the board tires for the special meeting and executive session.
Okay, we will call this a special meeting for Wednesday, October twenty-three, twenty twenty-four to order at five fifty-nine P M. Uh Ms. Olson, roll call, please.
Director Bankus?
Here.
Director Carey?
Here.
Director Hayfley?
Here.
Director Jorgensen?
Director Jorgensen is out of town and will not be joining us.
Director Malpakum?
Here.
Director Nelson?
Here.
Director Ott?
Here.
Uh we have five board members in attendance in person. Director Bankus is joining us remotely and Director Jorgensen is excused. Um please join me as we observe a moment of silence. Thank you. Director Carey, can you please make the motion to adopt the agenda?
I move that the Board of Education adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
Move and seconded, roll call, please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Carey?
Aye.
Director Hayfley?
Aye.
Director Malpakum?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it, the agenda has been adopted as presented. We have executive session in the special meeting. Director Ott, can you please make the motion to move into executive session?
Yes, I move that the Board of Education convenes into executive session to discuss property transactions per CRS twenty-four six four zero two. For a particular matter, Roosevelt Charger Academy.
Second.
Move and seconded, roll call, please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Carey?
Aye.
Director Hayfley?
Aye.
Director Malpakum?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it, we will enter into executive session. And if necessary, we will convene back at the board tires if any action is necessary following executive session. With that, we will step into executive session at this time.